Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the April 10th Committee of the Hall. I've been told I am to introduce Mr. Martin Pastuka.
Thank you, Council. Yeah, it says a red light, so I figured that was stop. So, good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. We're here to talk about a couple of things. In the past, Council has asked us to request information on the extent of our paving roads and our pedestrian walkway needs. And we've been taking the time. I think the last time that came up was in 2021. There was a question that came up in the Transportation Committee. I think it's come up in the budget presentations. And we've been taking the time in 2022 to really go through and try to get some analysis because the data we had wasn't that accurate. So, we really spent the last year doing the analysis to try and determine what the extent of it is and then what would be the options moving forward to try and make some headroads into those areas and also to how we were going to go about funding those particular improvements that are necessary. So, we're really going to talk about the presentation on the needs. What we see is the citywide needs and the amount of investment we need to make in terms of on our roadway surfaces and on our sidewalk areas. And also try and identify the funding sources to do that. Unfortunately, we have not had a dedicated source of funding for transportation purposes. We share the funding sources from the General Fund that comes from either the REITs or General Fund Availability. And it's the fact that we have a fluctuating amount that comes from the year. And also, we try to maximize the funds we have because we take the amount of money we have, we can multiply that by applying for grants and getting other funding programs. The only unfortunate thing about that is most of those are dedicated to arterials, secondary arterials, and collector streets, but the local streets don't get any funding. The federal government and the state government doesn't provide those, that funding for local improvements. So, those are the things that we have to do. So, to the extent that we're on arterials and things like that, we can do sidewalks and the street improvements. Again, we've taken the dollars we've had and really helped apply those to multiply that with through grants. But we haven't had the level of funding on a dedicated basis to do local improvements. There have been some that have been done over the years, but it's kind of been hit and miss based on availability. And through this process, what we hope to identify is through the Transportation Benefit District, one concept is the availability of dedicating a source of funding that will allow us then to move forward on a year-to-year basis and make those kind of investments because it's not going to get fixed overnight. It's going to be a long-term process, but having a long-term source of funds will allow us to start making headways in that direction. So, I'm going to turn it over. Jim Seitz is going to walk through our funding needs and our pavement plans. So, and then a little bit about transportation benefit districts, and then we'll be available to answer any questions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Martin. And there's an outline of what we'll be talking about first, the 10-year pavement preservation plan that staff has been working on. It's almost at completion now. Also, an update on where we are on the comprehensive walkway plan. And as Martin mentioned, we'll talk about the formation of the transportation benefit district, how that occurs, and what kind of funding it would be making available to us for an ongoing funding source for these particular programs. And then finally, discussion and just questions at the very end. To begin with, in transportation, one of our biggest assets is our pavements. If you had to replace all the pavements throughout the city, it would be over $1 billion in replacement cost. We have overall 320 centerline miles. That's basically just a linear measurement down the centerline of the road. And we have 753 lane miles. What they refer to as lane miles is if you had one mile of road, but you had two lanes, you just multiply by two and you end up with two lane miles versus one centerline miles. The way that works, obviously, some of our roads are wider, like Grady Way. So, that would be one times four or five. That's the calculation to get lane miles. It's a better measurement when you're talking about costs associated with these improvements. Talk a little bit about how the pavement does deteriorate. This has a piece of asphalt there moving from A through F. A lot of the pavement deteriorates over time due to the free cycle saws and heavy traffic in particular is critical for pavement deterioration and the life of the pavement. A would be a new pavement. And as I talk about later, I'll talk about pavement condition index. And at A, pavement is basically at a 100 pavement condition index. And as you move to the right, when you get to F, it's at zero. So, as you can see, it progresses into slight cracking to even more cracking, gets down deeper. Basically, the deterioration starts at the top and moves down to where at F, it totally fails and you're having to reconstruct that whole piece of pavement rather than just the top course of the pavement.
Madam President. Jim, approximately, how long would it take for a road to go from A to F?
The approximate lifespan of a pavement section like this is 20 years. In theory, which I'll talk about later, you can extend that life forever if you did treatment at certain pieces or certain times, critical times during the life of that pavement. And I'll show you a graphic on that next. Here's the pavement graph. And I mentioned the 20 years. You'll see that first pavement curve. This is the deterioration curve. And you'll see that if you did nothing to that pavement in 20 years, you'd basically have to replace that pavement. But if you did timely preservation on that pavement, you could extend the life, as I said, you know, in theory indefinitely. So, in the top portion, you see the bluish line. For every dollar you spend there, you're saving if you had let it go down further, you know, twice or four times as much if you are doing a treatment in the green area. Then exponentially, it can get worse where it's even more expensive as you get into the red, the poor and very poor areas of the pavement. But the little blue dots represent that, let's say that you did a chip seal right here at this first blue dot, that would basically raise it back up to 100 PCI again. So, you basically start your new life or your new curve and extend the life out to 35 years potentially. But you continue to make improvements such as a slurry seal maybe you'll do here, you'll extend it even further out. Then maybe down here, you do a two-inch overlay of the pavement, then it bumps it way back up again. So, you want to be making your improvements up this top part of the chart rather than waiting further on when the pavement gets more distressed and it's a lot more expensive to fix. A little bit about how we rate our pavements. We've hired a firm called StreetScan, which uses that vehicle that you see in the picture to record all the distresses in our pavements right now. And we take that data and put it into a program called StreetLogic software. And it provides for all of our segments. When I say a segment, it's usually just a block of a street is what I'm talking about when I talk about pavement segments. And it gives a rating for each one of those segments between 0 and 100. That's where we start. And then start doing some analysis at that point once we see what the condition of all of our pavement sections are. Next section is the evaluation of it. We look at, based on the PCI, what type of improvements need to be done, what type of preservation improvements in particular, like a chip seal or a grind and overlay. Or in some cases, you made, it may be a 95 where you just want to defer maintenance. And that's what the deferred maintenance means on that particular legend over here on the right. As I mentioned, we, well, for pavement preservation, we want to favor the higher PCIs. That's the time you want to do preservation. And as we'll talk about later, when we talk about budgets and our needs, we all can also in this program can basically prioritize by functional classification. So, if we're seeing a major backlog in a certain functional classification, we may want to put more resources towards that to address those backlog conditions. And ever since I've been at the city, we've used as a performance measure to keep all of our pavements at a 70 pavement condition index or above. At average, I should say, not all the pavements will be at that, but on average, citywide, we try to keep our pavements in a satisfactory condition. By the end of the 10th year, all the pavements should be at that particular level or higher is what our goal is. A little bit about the types of pavements that we have in the program. The StreetLogic program lets you insert what type of treatments you'll be using in your program. And to the left, you'll see what our city crews do. They do crack sealing in-house and we do pavement repairs in-house, which is basically cutting out a portion of the pavement that's usually a rectangular shape and replacing it. It's usually a smaller area, not the whole street. The type of work that we contract out, which we haven't been doing as much, the seal projects, we haven't been doing as much, but it is a very low-cost alternative to doing over asphalt overlays and it'll spread our budget a lot further. So, in the plan that I'm going to be showing you, we will be entertaining doing cape seals, chip seals, and slurry seals. That's basically an application of oil and rock and then having to press it with a roller. Well, you've probably seen the mostly throughout the city is the asphalt overlays, which is typically a grind and overlay. And there are some reconstruction, although in our plan, we're saving reconstruction for capital projects. We're not including those in our pavement preservation program. And just to let you know that we don't do this just all by computer. There is a human element to it. We have a subject area expert. His name is Jason Grant that you'll see in the picture. He's our pavement management technician. So, he takes all those segments that I was talking about that they have the ratings on, and he has to put them into logical projects and determine what type of treatment makes the most sense for that particular project. And sometimes that'll be a chip seal, sometimes it'll be a two-inch asphalt or two-inch grind and asphalt project. And we are creating a story map to talk about the things I have in this presentation as well as have an interactive map where the residents can go in and see what type of pavement condition they have on their particular street and what type of proposed improvement that we're going to have on their section of the street as well. So, where are we as far as our current ratings? We did this in 2021 is the last time we did the ratings. And our average citywide pavement condition index is 73. So, we are meeting our performance measures. In fact, all of the planning areas, if you broke it down by planning area, are meeting that performance measure at this time. The chart on the top shows by basically the functional classification. We have been putting a lot of resources into the major arterials like Duval Avenue is one that we've just recently completed. We're starting on Rainier as well and as well as 43rd we're working on as well. But we put a lot of resources in that and it's showing it a little bit higher pavement condition index for major arterials. And then this shows that by neighborhood, Cedar Hill and East Plateau seems to be a little bit higher in those areas than the rest of the city. As far as estimated backlog, and let me explain what backlog means. All those segments that I talked about that'll be in the program have a cost associated with those. So, if we did everything at one time, it'd add up to $145 million if you did everything that is in the current plan. Obviously, we're not going to be able to afford that and you wouldn't want to live in a city that had that much construction going on at one time either. So, you do it over time. And this is where we are as far as by functional classification, where the PCIs are. Most of them are in the category 55 to 70. But the one standout is on the right side, this shows it by the type of road. And it's real obvious that we have a huge backlog in the local roadway network. And we'll talk about that more when I move to the next budget slide. We're trying to address that. It's obviously is a real standout of where we have a lot of need right now. This is what we looked at as far as an annual, average annual investment. We did look at other budget scenarios that were higher cost. But since this one really emphasized the local roads backlog, we ended up with this as a recommendation of the $2.1 million that we would need on an annual basis for preservation, we'd apply about 1.5 million of that towards our local street network. And we'd focus a lot of our efforts for grants and other capital projects to take care of our, a lot of our arterial network, although we'd still be applying some preservation like crack sealing and things like that in-house as well to that particular network. How that's broken out, as I mentioned, the city crews are already doing that work. So, this is actually funded. The $600,000 is already funded in our existing budget. What isn't funded is the $1.5 million annual overlay contract. We don't have that in the 2324 budget. So, we really need to have a more consistent funding source so we can do that annual investment every year. A couple of-
In the annual overlay contract, it's not just overlays, those treatments Jim talked about before, cape seals and slurry seals, those sorts of things, but it's just an overall maintenance or, and it could include overlays as well, but it's a combination of things, not just overlays only.
And the other thing that's helping us with the pavement condition indexes, we do have private capital improvement projects that are required to do pavement restoration when they do work in our street. And obviously, we have the capital improvement projects, which I've talked about earlier, like the Duval, Rainier, and other ones that help improve our pavement condition on our arterial network. And again, it's eligible for grants, whereas we're really focusing on the local network, which doesn't, isn't eligible for those pavement grants. Moving on to sidewalks, this is our dashboard for where we are on the missing sidewalks. We're still doing some QAQC on this particular dashboard, but I'll try to see if it'll zoom in here. This is a, to the dashboard. There we go. It's actually going to work, I think. We intend to have this on our citywide website so that the residents can go in and actually see where the sidewalks are missing throughout the city. The red is bad. There's no sidewalks there. The green is good. That's where we have the sidewalks. And I'll zoom in. We have a couple of filters on this dashboard. Let's go to, say, the Talbot neighborhood to see what's going on down here. It'll zoom into that particular neighborhood and you can see more closely where, right up above Talbot Hill, just south of the freeway, you see a lot of missing sidewalks in that area. You get into the newer subdivisions, you see there are some sidewalks there, but going down further south, you see a lack of sidewalk in those particular areas. So, we have another filter.
So, red is no sidewalks.
Right. Green is, does have sidewalks, yep.
Okay.
Green doesn't talk about the condition of the sidewalks, but it does say there are sidewalks.
There's sidewalks, yeah.
And you could all, we all put another filter on here. Let's say that we want to just look at the minor arterial, let's say. So, that basically looks like there's only one minor arterial and that is, it looks like Talbot. I'll click on it.
That's Talbot.
Yeah, Talbot, Road South. So, tell us a little bit about the road. Gives a little bit of information about it. We intend to have the type of, to give you, go back to the pavement ones, we have a similar pop-up that'll tell what type of improvements are planned as well for the pavements on the other dashboard that we're creating for the pavements as well. But that's, kind of gives you an idea of what's, how that'll work. And we'll also eventually, as I talk about how we develop the projects, we'll have the projects as well on this particular dashboard.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I love this. I love anything that's visual and anything that's going to be available to the public. For sake of, for me, understanding, am I, oh, can I get that visual back up? Thank you. For, I saw it in the visual, but the lowest, does that mean that Benson have the most sidewalks in the neighborhood? Or it mean he has the least amount?
Well, it actually just, it shows that, let me go back to the-
I see the bottom little orange tab right there at the bottom is what I'm referencing based of all these neighborhoods.
Oh, that's the missing, that's the missing sidewalks.
Oh, so Benson has the most missing sidewalks.
Yes.
Oh, thank you for making that clarification. Thank you.
The other right.
Get the colored chart corresponds with different chart than on there. That would show then by functional area. But this one, this is the one primarily that shows the missing and what we have.
Thank you. Thank you.
There we go. Trying to get to the next slide here. There we go. So, moving forward, now that we've pretty much have the data throughout the city where we have missing sidewalks and where we do have current sidewalks, we're going to be moving forward with a proposed walkway plan process, which, starting on the left side, we've identified the destination and gaps within our system. We're pretty much done with that. Moving into April and May, we plan on prioritizing using criteria, and I'll talk a little bit about the criteria that we plan on using. We'll collect public feedback and develop some recommendations. And in July, October, we'll be creating a preliminary priority list, basically a priority array of where we think the sidewalks should be going by priority. We'll be reviewing and refining the projects for feasibility and cost. And my next slide's going to talk about what I mean by feasibility and cost. And then towards the end of the year, November, December, we should be able to provide you final recommendations on sidewalks. This is what I was referring to when I said proposed costs and feasibility criteria. Since we have such a huge need, and we'll talk a little bit about the budget for this, it's still going to be several years to actually get everything built throughout the city. And it's one of those things where it's a multi-decade if you wanted to do the whole city. So, we need to prioritize this funding and try to get it maximized as much as possible. So, some of the things that we'll be looking at is, in the neighborhoods in particular, the property owners, we're assuming will need to give us the right-of-way for these projects. So, if it's important for the neighborhood to have the sidewalks, we feel like their contribution should at least be to provide the land that we need so we don't have to go through right-of-way acquisition to provide these sidewalks. And these are just proposals and we are open to your feedback on this, obviously. Other thing is, we would not follow complete street standards, you know, with the full-blown planter strip and other type of complete street criteria if the right-of-way wasn't already acquired. And another thing that we're looking at to stretch the dollars even further is only constructing the sidewalks, so not necessarily constructing the curbs, gutters, and stormwater pipe. That may not work in all situations. Sometimes you may need to do a certain amount of drainage work as well. But those are the things that we're looking at this time. There was one other bullet that I forgot to put on here that I wanted to at least mention, though, was another alternative is, that we just recently started thinking about is we're looking at better access to the Family First Center. We're looking at doing a sidewalk project that have a missing link up there just south of Puget Drive and going down to the entrance of the school there on the west side of the street. It's about a million-dollar project. We're just getting to the planning and preliminary work on that. But one thought that's, even sitting that further down into the Puget Drive is, do we really need to have sidewalks along Puget Drive? We have fairly wide shoulders there. Could we just put a protective curbing or something like that? It would be a lot less expensive, but provide a protected walking area for pedestrians and would make the dollars go that much further and get a lot more protected walkways throughout the city. So, those are some of the ideas that we're, we're thinking about right now and obviously we'd like your input on as well.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. So, just on that point, real quick, it seems like a great example of a potential candidate for like a shared use path or something on the one side. Is that, is that, would there be separation or were just some sort of like cones or curbing as far as that goes? I mean, if you could get the separation, you had enough width, that seems like that would be a preferable option versus running concrete the whole length of it.
Yeah, that's, all those things are options that we'd have on the table. We have done the curbing in other areas. We, you know, in some cases, there might even be a ditch that'll provide some separation. I know along 116th, for example, there is an existing ditch on the one side of the street before the path is there, and that provides that nice buffer that you're talking about. So, obviously, it's more important to have that better facility on arterials. Some of our local streets or they have lower stress of automobiles moving through the area. You can probably get by with less protection, but on these arterials, it is nice to have that separation. That's something we're always considering, but we also want to balance that with the cost and making sure we get improvements throughout the city as well. Other criteria, this is more of the traditional planning criteria that we use as we look at walkway plans. That's pedestrian safety and barriers to pedestrians, connectivity to community facilities like the Family First Center, connectivity to transit, continuity of sidewalks, where the missing links at, and quality of sidewalks. In some cases, even though there's sidewalks there, they may not be in enough shape to where we can really say that it has a good facility. So, we need to look at that as well. And obviously, community support for these projects, we'll definitely need that. If we need right-of-way, we need to have computer support for people to provide that so we can put improvements in, in their neighborhood. As far as public outreach, we are going to be having an interactive map where users can pinpoint their concerns and interest as well. And staff will be available at a lot of our community events that we'll be having this summer as well, similar to the Sands Pilot Project, work that we've been doing, gathering input and feedback from the neighborhoods. I'll pause there if there's any questions or I can move right into the transportation benefit district.
Rivera, Alperson, and then me, I guess, before we move into the TBD.
Rivera, you had that extra I there.
Oh, my apologies.
No worries. It happens all the time. Thank you for an amazing presentation. I'm looking forward to the rest of it. A couple of things that came, two things that came up, and I'll ask one and then I'll wait, come back for the second one. Tagging on to what Councilmember McIrvin said, you responded with, you know, kind of assessing like the cost and like what we'd have to do citywide. And that made me question, has there been a cost analysis to see how much money has been invested in the different neighborhoods over time? Because when I'm looking back at this presentation and looking particularly at the slide with that beautiful website that I cannot wait for everyone to be able to play with, I see that, for, that some parts have, you know, are much lower than Benson while Benson is very high. And I noticed that Benson was high in some other areas as well. And so, in terms of equity, have all of the Ritten been getting the equitable amount of tender loving care for their sidewalks and pavements and things like that? Has there been a cost analysis done to show how much has been invested wise, neighborhood wise?
I think the issue here is it's not just to what the city invests, but also private development. So, remember, a lot of this happens as development occurs, they're required to build sidewalks and curb and gutter. So, in some of the newer developed areas, you'll see a lot of that goes in, which was reflected on the map. Some of these are also times when they were developed, when they were for the city. They were developed when the county was the regulatory agency for the land and the county didn't require sidewalks at that time. So, you know, it's hard to say that, is it based on what the city invested or is it more a matter of how it has developed over time and who was the authority at that time and what were the requirements for those developments as they went in? Because especially in our local roads, you'll see a lot of developments went in without sidewalks, without curbing gutters. And that was the standard that the county allowed at the time.
So, the answer would be no, that there hasn't been a cost analysis done. All right. Thank you. Please.
Yes. What happens if a property owner doesn't give right-of-way?
That's something we'll have to talk about as we move forward with the plan is that, assuming that ends up being our criteria, we would basically not move forward for that project. It was one option. The other option-
So, as a follow-up, is that to say on a street, one, one bad apple can spoil the whole thing?
Or we'd look at it whether we do it on both sides of the street or one side of the street. Again, it may not be, the idea here is provide pathways for the neighborhood so people have a safe place to walk. And it may not be on the same side of the street, especially in residential neighborhoods. And so, if somebody holds it up, we can always look at the other side of the street. It's really a matter of, if we start having to buy right-of-way and we do it for one, then we got to do it for everybody. And pretty soon, we're not able to do much of anything with the dollars that we have. And therefore, we make very little progress in terms of adding additional pedestrian pathways throughout the city.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. On the 74% average annual investment in local roads, which was the $1.5 million which was missing, how long at that 7%, $1.5 million?
Recording in progress.
How long before we get to 100%? How, I mean, are we talking decades?
We will never get to 100%.
Yeah.
Just because of the amount of investment. Our goal here is to maintain that's above 70%. We're at 73 now. It'd be great if we can maintain 73. If we could get to high 70s and the low 80s, that'd be phenomenal. But the amount of investment that we're going to have to make to get to raise up to 100%, we just, as Jim said, it's right now, it's 145 million and that continues to escalate because every year, the level of the condition of the street deteriorates and the cost goes higher as we don't meet those investments. So, it's a lot of money. And again, our goal here with the streets is to keep them in, in good operating order and in a satisfactory condition so that our republic, our, you know, the number of potholes are minimized, you know, we don't have failing streets. Try to keep our roadways as passable as possible and safe as possible.
If it's okay, oh, go ahead. I have one more, but go ahead.
I was going to ask about the 1.5 million. So, that's the current annual average. You're saying that's what is desired? And if that's, if that's the answer, then why? Because I looked at, I thought, I thought, that seems kind of low. Or are we shooting low here, just reasonable? Where does the 1.5, where does that number come from as, as the overall goal for preservation?
Yeah. Project or the software I was talking about is called StreetLogic. It allows you to put in basically what you want as far as priorities are concerned. And if we prioritize our arterials, we ended up with a bigger cost, but we prioritize the local streets based upon the backlog that we have on those streets. So, and it generally drives down the cost because the cost to do the local streets are, they're not as wide as their arterials, doesn't require as much traffic control and other things for the project. So, it actually drives down the cost. And a lot of the treatments, like the chip seals are more applicable in some of those areas as well, although not all. So, it really drives down the overall cost. But, but the, but basically, the overall budget that we need is 2.1 million. And as I mentioned in the presentation, we already have the budget for the in-house services that's already being paid for. So, Mike Stanhouse and his crews will be still doing about $600,000 a year regardless if we get additional funding. But in order to do our overlay program, we need that annual amount and that's where we would contract that out. we would contract that out. So we would contract out about 1.5 million every year. And what that does for the council is it keeps us at, over a 10-year period, we would end up being at a, still a decent pavement condition index of 70. So that's where you put in the computer that you want to reach your goal, your performance goal of 70 over 10 years. So that's the amount that we would need to meet that goal of being at 70. If the council decided you wanted to be at 80 pavement condition index, we could run that as well. But that would be a much higher cost. But it's a different, just level of service and performance measures. And we felt like 70 is, ever since I've been with the city, which is about 17 years now, we've always had that as our performance measure, and that's always been our goal. But we can change that at any time if the council desires to.
And I would say that 70 is a pretty standard number in the industry. It's a standard number that most cities look to, as it means your roads are in decent shape. You have some roads that are bad, you have some roads that are really good, but most of your roads are really decent shape. And as Jim said, based on the amount of investments, that's something that most cities can afford to do. The other limiting factor on this was also the amount of money that could be generated through a TBD, a councilmatic vote on a TBD, which Jim will talk to next.
So in the interest of time, we'll take one more question from Carmen Rivera, and my follow-up question, and then we should move on to the TBD. Thank you.
I appreciate that. My only question was on the proposed walkway plan update. How much was the rent and business plan taken into consideration? And before you answer, I'm taking this with the particular number four in mind, making sure that we have a safe, hate-free, and conclusive city. And my motivation in asking this is, again, someone who was born, raised in the Benson neighborhood, who's walked the non-sidewalk side parts as a teenager and as a young adult, I would be interested to see, to make sure that equity is at the forefront of this business plan. And so how much has the rent and business plan been taken into consideration with these recommendations?
I was just saying that we haven't done our priority array yet. So it's basically a criteria that we'd be evaluating. And if the council wanted us to, we certainly could come up with an equity lens in that criteria as well. So that's something you direct us to do. We certainly would look at that as well as we develop a priority array.
Okay. My question is just a visual, sidewalks only, not gutters, not spillways or whatever. So I have this picture of the cement just sort of ending and hanging there. So when you say sidewalks only, can you explain to me what does that look like?
Well, in, say 116th, where we're looking at that portion that's on the west side as you're going south, or going south on 116th from Puget Drive, we have sidewalks we'd be tying into. So we basically, we'd probably, in this case, bring it over if we just did sidewalks over a little bit further out, because we'd plan for maybe a future planter strip and a curb and gutter there, which would be closer to the white line, which is called edgeline on the street. So it's fairly flat through that area. So in that particular area, we would just grade it flat and put the sidewalk in. There's some little slope to the sidewalk, but you just see kind of a sidewalk on the shoulder of the road, similar to what you would see on the other side where you have an asphalt path. But this would be concrete sidewalk just there.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, let's, thank you.
All right. So one of our local funding options for transportation is the Transportation Benefit District. And so far, according to MRSC, I think it was last year, they counted 110 cities have formed a Transportation Benefit District, five counties. And they are formed by ordinance after a public hearing. And what you'll hear more, hear me say several times, is everything needs to be, have a public hearing. Transparency is the real intent of a lot of the legislation in here. So there's always a public hearing preceding the ordinances that I'll be talking about. But the ordinance that would need to be created would have to specify the boundaries of the district. And in most cases, according to MRSC, I think 85% of the jurisdictions actually use their city limits. So it's a whole inclusive area as part of their ordinance. And they also need to specify the transportation improvements that will be funded with the Transportation Benefit District. And the funding mechanisms that have been used primarily have been the sales tax and the license fees, although there is eligible for fuel fees, impact fees, and bonds as well. But for the most part, according to MRSC, it's mainly been sales tax and license fees that have been used as revenue sources. So there was some changes last year that gave us some more additional options. Before, the council has, or even now, has the council has the ability to do a up to $50 vehicle tab fee councilmatically. This legislation allowed the council to do a 0.1% sales tax councilmatically without voter approval. So that gives you another option, if you'd prefer to use sales tax versus the license fees, and that's what we're recommending. License fees doesn't generate as much when finances calculated that out. And they're certainly don't, they apply to different people. They would just apply to people in our city versus the sales tax, which would apply to everybody that comes into the city as well, and would spread that tax to those just visiting and that are impacting our streets as well. And finance did do a calculation for us of what it would generate, or what it would have generated if we had one in 2022, and that's almost $4.4 million in revenue. They did also give additional authority as far as the limits. If you do a voter-approved one, you can go up to two, from two to, point, 0.2 to 0.3% additional sales tax as well for up to 10 years upon voter approval. So what we're thinking as far as budgeting for the Transportation Improvement District, given the 4.4 million that it could potentially, we were very conservative in thinking that, you know, obviously, the sales tax goes along the normal business cycle and economy. So we would plan on maybe a $3.5 million budget every year, or revenue every year from this particular revenue source. We'd allocate the 1.5 of that towards the pavement preservation plan that I talked about, and then apply the rest of it to an annual walkway plan to put in sidewalks throughout the city. We could also include in the ordinance that other improvements could be, that are eligible, like the Transportation Improvement Plan, all those projects could be eligible as well if the council chose, as well as the projects on our Trails and Bicycle Plan and the ADA Transition Plan. When I reviewed the ordinances of other cities, a lot of them were very specific on which projects they wanted to do, and a lot of them were more programmatic, like the city of Des Moines, they just said they wanted to use all the funding towards their asphalt overlay program. They didn't necessarily specify which projects, but the program, they just allocated all the money towards that. Where other cities have said, we want it done on these four projects. And we're giving you the option that we think that we need, definitely need an annual investment in pavements and walkways to meet our needs. And the 3.5 million is what we were forecasting that we would need for that. But if you, if we did, ended up with more revenue as we did in 2022, it could be allocated towards other programs as projects as well, or would back into the pavement preservation plan or walkway. But that's a starting point of where we were thinking the budget would go.
The other thing about those is obviously the cost of those particular programs are going to go up year over year based on construction cost index. So obviously, you know, we're going to have to look at that as well. So it won't just be $2 million now between now and the next 10 years. That's going to increment, go up incrementally as we, in order to keep up with the cost of construction, to get the same level of work that we projected to do.
So councilmatically, we could do 1% every 10 years. Point, I'm sorry, 0.1%?
You could do 1%, 1/10 of 1% would happen. You could do a councilmatic vote. It could go for 10 years. At the end of 10 years, you can renew that for another 10 years.
Right, okay.
Renew it from there.
Or go to the voters for 0.2 or 0.3. Okay, thank you.
Well, the next steps would, if you wanted just to move forward, we'd need to do the ordinances that are required. And prior to each one of the ordinances, we'd have to have a public hearing. First ordinance would include the boundary of the district, which we are assuming would be citywide. Then the transportation improvements that would be funded. And that's where, the last slide I was talking about, we'd include the pavement preservation plan, the walkway plan, and any other plans that you wanted to include in the ordinance as well. It could be funded by the funding. The other thing that you have an option to do is granting the council the authority over the Transportation Benefit District. Basically, it absolves the Transportation Benefit Districts, but then you take on the rights and responsibilities of the district. And a lot of the cities have done this, just because of it's less meetings, you don't have to basically stop one meeting process to start another one as a Transportation Benefit District Governing Board. Basically, the council takes on all the rights. So we'd have a separate ordinance that would basically abolish the Transportation District and basically give you the, all the rights and obligations of that district, so you can operate just as you do with any other council agenda topic. So a lot of cities have opted to do that, and I'm assuming we probably want to do that as well. The last ordinance would be opposing whatever revenue stream that you would want us to move forward with. We're recommending the 0.1% sales tax is what we're recommending.
Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Jim. I am excited by this. Councilmember Perez and I have been harping on sidewalks for years. And I know as a city, we were pretty, we were really supportive of the tools that the legislature was giving cities to do TBD. So I am really excited that we're having this conversation, we're walking down this road. Great presentation. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just want to also echo, I really appreciated the thoughtfulness that went into the data gathering for this in order to drive and prioritize. I also want to echo support for Councilmember Rivera's idea. Actually, it was one of my questions as well, of using equity and equity lens on this and scoring based off a need amongst other factors as well. I think that's very important in the actual implementation of this. The question I have comes down to the dollars and cents of how much it gets us. So assuming 2 million, and let's just say, you know, in the cost of today's material and labor, how many miles of sidewalk does 2 million get us in an annual plan?
The hard part of that question depends on where it's at and what it is. I think, you know, it's very difficult to say. I think generally speaking, we'll be figuring it's like 500, 500?
To give you the example I'd be going back to is that, that segment of sidewalk that I was talking about on 116th. If we did that, it's 950 feet. And our cost estimate, if we did the full-blown curb and gutter, planter strip, and sidewalk, it would be almost $1 million for that. But if we just did the sidewalk, it would obviously be maybe half or maybe a little bit more than that.
$500 a foot then, just for sidewalk.
Yeah.
The answer is not much.
I was going to ask you to do the math, 108 miles, right?
That's why it's as important to, you know, do the priority array and look at the different criteria, and basically look at the cost covering measures as well. That's why we were looking so closely at trying to keep the cost down as much as possible.
I'm sure.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to say thank you for this amazing presentation. I'm someone who's been adamant as well about getting a Transportation Benefit District or something to create revenue for us to really tackle some of these sidewalks and needs. And so I'm just really much looking forward to it. And also, again, I'm going to reemphasize that as part of the Renton Business Plan, I really do hope an equity tool is put into place when these recommendations go forward. Thank you.
And just to show you, Councilmember Rivera, we would always look at, obviously, the business plans we go forward. This was really just to give you data and understand the scope of the issue that we're trying to deal with. So we weren't trying to prioritize, but more just to show you what the, what the needs were.
Absolutely. And I would be remiss if I didn't try to, you know, let you know what I'm thinking.
No, we appreciate that.
Of course.
Councilmember?
Albertson? Albertson.
I thought it was Kim.
Yeah, Kim. I didn't hear Van, sorry. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for the presentation. In terms of our, in comparison, if we can, with other city around our boundary here, because we're talking about roughly the 70 range, right? Are other cities at the 80s, because you're saying comparatively, they're mainly at the 70s as well?
I think it depends on the city and the newness of the city. If a city is relatively new, has a large number of new streets versus a smaller street, then it's going to have a higher, you know, PCI rating. Also, the amount of investment that's made. I think someplace like Bellevue is probably going to have a higher PCI than we do, just because their neighborhoods are newer. They've made a lot of investment, they're downtown, and a lot of money that's been through development process have come in there. I'm not sure what Seattle's PCI is. They may not be 70, but 70 is pretty, but it's a standard that every, you know, to be a good functioning city, they're, you're really looking at in the 70s as a, as a good rating. I don't know that we know everybody else's PCI, because not everybody wants to share.
I actually, I actually worked with AWC on pavement conditions statewide. So I worked on this a lot and looked at cities' PCIs. And this was, you know, 20 years ago. But at the time, it's exactly what Martin talked about. Bellevue and Redmond's pavement condition was, you know, 80s and 90s, whereas a lot of the small cities around the state are, a lot of they have a lot more failing pavements. And it's just gotten better over the years, as Transportation Improvement Board has developed policies and programs to help small cities with their pavement preservation. But I think 70 is for cities like Kent and Federal Way. And, well, Federal Way actually always had a fairly high one. They were a newer city. But Bellevue and Redmond were the ones that were always at the very top, a very high level of service and pavement condition index. But 70 is, is probably a good one to be shooting for. I think a lot of the smaller cities in particular really struggle, and even to keep it at 70.
Let me get quick, I know we're on time here. On the criteria for assessing walkability, and I can understand if you may not have an answer for this, but when you look at those, has any thought been given to prioritizing those different criteria when you're trying to assess walkability? I mean, I see a few things here, but is there, I guess, when you're kind of, going to kind of force rank, you know, okay, where is, I mean, when it comes to looking at the whole thing, do any of those, is there a priority to any of the criteria as far as assessing walkability?
Yes. But I think safety, obviously, safety is the key, the highest priority. We want to make sure that when people walk, it's safe and they'll walk with, you know, connectivity is important. But if we provide connectivity, obviously, safety is the biggest issue. We want to make sure it's safe. So those places where, as Jim says, you look at pedestrian collisions, access to, distance between barriers, you know, things like that. Want to make sure if people are crossing streets, they have a safe place to cross. Want to make sure as they're walking down the street, it's safe, and we're not putting people in a roadway or arterial roadways, or even, you know, high-speed residential streets. We want to make sure that those are the kind of pathways we follow. Safe routes to school would be another part of this. You take a look at school routes. It's all part of the criteria that, that will be looked at as we go forward to see where the pathways are, where people are using them. And that was the whole idea behind the Sands Project, was to try and identify where people were using, what were the routes they were using, because those would be the ones we'd want to put pathways on first. Jim?
The only thing I would add is that we do have a local safety plan for pedestrians, and we have high accident locations where we're trying to make improvements. 168, for example, has two or three high accident locations for pedestrians. So we really focus on those particular areas when it comes to safety.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And this is very exciting, very exciting. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.